Go ahead and call this special Celine City Council meeting to order on Wednesday, February the 19th at 6:30 PM. Members present are myself, Mayor Morrow, Mayor Pro Tem Gearbock, Councilmember CO, Mitchell, Dylan Delarco, and Mr. Kamara Sulek will be late, arriving around 7:00 PM this evening. From city staff, we have City Manager Campbell, Deputy Clerk Bloom, City Engineer DPW Director Fordice, Wastewater Treatment Superintendent Weigowski, Treasurer Bennett, and Deputy Assistant City Manager Green. The rest of you who are in the audience this evening, we welcome you and we would encourage you to sign in the back to my left. You can also pick up a copy of the agenda on the back table. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Gearbock, is there a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Again, Councilmember Kamara Sulek will be present, he will just be a little late. So at this time, we'll proceed to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make a question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? If you'd please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, that would be great. You have three minutes.
Eric Grossman, Macon Road, Celine Township. I'm here to comment because your south side option is situated on my family's property, which is adjacent to the Neathambers Preserve and is also in your master plan as a preservation area. So I strongly advise you against that option and I wasn't real impressed with the north option being adjacent to the Mill Pond Park, city's premier park either. So I don't, I don't know if any of that was looked into. I believe the current site is the best site. It's got the room. It's already an industrial site. It does have a large vacant parking lot next to it between Monroe Street that you could acquire. The ability to go onto the industrial site across the street, across Monroe is, is very good as well. You know, no matter where it goes, it's going to be surrounded by houses, so it doesn't matter if it's in town or out of town. Wherever it is, houses are going to be around it, so you're not escaping that. I think, in my opinion, it's better to, to work on the existing plant. The Yucca option, I think is costly and has price controls out of your hands. And also, whether it's that plant, but especially the Yucca, there's probably easily 30% of the sanitary sewer influence is groundwater from footing drains in Celine. You think of it as only happening, it's during spikes in rain, but it's constant, it's every day, all day. And if you go in old neighborhoods, you can often tell a lot by the street names. And when you go down and into Old Creek, you have Old Creek, Marle Pool, Spring Brook, Spring Brook Court. Those streets were well-named for a reason. That subdivision alone is dumping serious amounts of water into your sewage plant daily. In 1983, the average was 1.4 million gallons a day. That's currently what you are today. In 86, the Fords stopped their plating and that was about 300,000 gallons a day that they, they used. But since 1983, you're at the same volume, but since then, you've acquired Northview, Wildwood, Maplewood, Arboretum, Huntington Woods, Torwood, and many other areas. So your use really hasn't exceeded the 1983 volume. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Grossman. Additional citizen comments on agenda items.
Mary Hess, I agree with Mr. Grossman on the Yucca plan. That was proposed probably 20 some years ago. And it's, they will control the costs. And it really, I think we have a lot of infiltration in our stormwater. And I don't know the last time when they were televised as far as how much infiltration is coming in from the ground that is going down to our plant to be serviced. And the most important thing is we have a city to take care of with Mr. Layer's farm. And I'm concerned about this proposition of annexation of a big piece of property with a promise to serve it within a period of time when we don't even know our leaders which one you're going to do. And time is important. And I think anything that is in an agreement should have the caveat, you know, act of God, strike wrong parts or whatever. And that part concerns me very much. Thank you.
Thank you. The additional citizen comments on agenda items. Okay, then we'll proceed to the first and only new business item, which is new business item 20-31, mausoleum window restoration. This will be a motion to acknowledge the February 12th, 2020 memo from City Engineer DPW Director Fordice and award or not to award the contract to solstice in the amount of $16,208. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Gearbock to acknowledge and to award, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember CO. DPW Director Fordice, do you care to make a brief statement, then we'll open it up for questions? Okay. His memo was, was pretty self-explanatory. Are there any questions, comments for our DPW Director? Mr. Gearbock?
So, just to clarify on the schedule and everything, they'll be removing the windows and then taking them, their location in Chicago and then bringing them back and installing them.
And again, just for the public's benefit, it's our understanding that the repair will be done and the, the windows will be replaced by Memorial Day. Very good. Thank you for your work on this. Are there any additional questions for our DPW Director? Then there's a motion, any discussion? There's a motion on the floor to acknowledge and to award moved by Gearbock, seconded by CO. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the one discussion item of the evening, which is the wastewater treatment sighting study update. Yes?
I am so sorry. Can I double check? Did that motion? Okay, it did have the amount in there.
Yes.
Okay, I just didn't hear you the second time, so, okay, never mind. Thank you.
So we proceed to our one discussion item, which is the wastewater treatment sighting study update. There were some supplemental materials passed out this evening. We apologize for the delay. One of them includes a memorandum from Roger Swets, along with our financial advisor Warren Kramer. There is an Option 1A document, an Option 3C document, a document entitled Difference, and then a spreadsheet that I think was provided by, is this from your office, Mickey Joe?
Yes.
Yes. That schedule, okay. Which will also be referenced during the presentation today. To follow up on an email that the city manager sent yesterday, we weren't, we are not going to get anywhere close to developing consensus this eve, this evening. Before I turn it over to Roger and Kramer, or Roger and Warren, I'll entertain some comments from Mr. Brian Rubel, if he has any. You don't have any.
I don't have any.
Okay. How about that? Well, perhaps there will be some questions and comments for you at the conclusion of the presentation this evening. So I'm going to turn it over to Roger and Warren. They're going to present, take as much time as you'd like, gentlemen. Try your best to exercise brevity, of course. I think our goal would be to get out of here maybe around, between 8:00 and 8:30 this evening. And then similar to what we have done at, I think, the last two work meetings, at the conclusion of your remarks, we'll work our way around the table and start with the first round of questioning, with the first round of questions in which council members will be limited to five minutes. And then we'll work our way back around in the event that there are some additional questions or, or comments. The conclusion of our discussion this evening, we'll talk about next steps, which will likely be either scheduling another work meeting or adding this as a discussion item at an upcoming regular city council meeting. So with that, City Manager Campbell, is there anything you'd like to add at this time? Okay. Then Roger, I'm going to turn it over to you. And again, please be sure to speak into the microphone. And council members, when you're recognized also, please be sure to speak into the microphone because this is recorded. This is a timely and relevant conversation, so we hope that our constituents will, will review a, a recording of this, of this meeting if they're interested in the subject. Mr. Swets?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to give a, an introduction and an overview, and then I'm going to turn it over to, to Warren to handle the numbers. Warren is with Robert W. Baird and they've provided the financial services to the city for, for a good number of, of years here. And so he's going to have some very important outlooks, I think, on the various options that have been presented to, to the city for the, for the sighting study. I do want to mention Preliminary Brian has been very helpful to us and we're very thankful to him for that help because he's really kind of helped us, I think, dig down and, and give some analysis to the options that were presented in the sighting study to help us then give you some thoughts financially with respect to those, to those options. So the sighting study, you know, contained, you know, Option 1B, three Option 2s, and then several Option 3s and an, and an Option 4, which was really, we're not really focused on because that one was kind of an, an outlier. When, when I saw those options, given the, the dollar magnitude of, of what these projects may cost, I thought it would be very important to get Warren involved because I think it's critical to know, you know, are these, are these projects feasible from a financing perspective and what various financing consequences might attach to the various options that will help you prioritize and, and understand which ones may be, in, in your view, more, more appropriate for the city to pursue. So that's kind of the genesis of this meeting. And in order to do that analysis without just covering you in an avalanche of, of material, we focused on analyzing two options. We analyzed Option 1A from the sighting study and Option 3C, Alternative 3C. Now, Options 1A and 1B are relatively close to each other, so the 1A option is really rather representative of either one of those options. Either one could fit within this analysis with just marginal differences to the numbers. Options 2A through 3C, all being in the 90 million-ish range, I think are also fairly representatively represented by, by Alternative 3C. So we're really kind of focusing on the Option 1 alternatives vis a vis all the other alternatives. And one of the big differences between the Option 1 alternatives and the other alternatives is that as, as, as Brian and his colleague pointed out, when the sighting study was presented, Option 1 alternatives can be done in phases. The other alternatives all need to be done all upfront. So if you're going to transfer waste to Yucca, and I understand there may be some issues with Yucca that, that, that maybe make that less feasible at this point in time, but again, since we're looking at that representatively, either building the infrastructure to transfer to Yucca or building a whole new plant, you obviously can't do that in phases because you have to have all the infrastructure in place for something to work. So what that means is a very large, you know, kind of 90 to 100 million dollars-ish bond issue, all in one piece, all upfront. And then all being paid for by rates charged against the current user base of, of the system. Now, that could also be done with Option 1, 1A and 1, 1B. That could all be done in one, in one, yes?
I, I do beg your pardon. For people watching at home and for people in the audience, can you give a quick rundown and summary of the options that you're discussing?
Sure.
So, you know, if they have 1A written down, they might not know exactly what that is.
Right.
Thank you, I beg your pardon.
Yeah, so Option, Option, the Option 1 options are, 1A is, 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 is providing the new treatment plant facilities on the existing site. 1B is using the existing site and property west of Monroe. The Alternative 2 options would be building a new plant in a different location around the city, either west, south, or east. And then the Option 3 alternatives would be various different iterations of what it would take to bring the city's waste to, to Yucca. So, as I was saying, Option 1, 1A was, was about 66 million, 1B was about 68 million. You could also do that upfront. We did not run a separate scenario for that. If that were something the city wanted to dig into deeper, we can get into that. But what we wanted to really focus on tonight was what would be the benefits slash pros and cons of being able to do a phased project on Alternatives 1A or B vis a vis the large big upfront bond that you would have to do for all the other, all the other alternatives. To help us do that, Tetra Tech provided us, and you'll find this on page 2 of the cover memo that you were presented with. Tetra Tech provided us some estimates of how that phasing could work. And I do need to emphasize, everything we're talking tonight is, are estimates and built on lots of assumptions, that we've got to start somewhere, but I think this is very illustrative to help get you some understanding that these numbers could be much different by the time something actually happened, obviously. So what, what Tetra Tech provided us was a summary that said that there would need to be for Option 1A, and, and I would say also Brian told us that if we phased Option 1A, the cost would be more than if we just did all of 1A upfront. So, so, so this phased option is a little bit more expensive in total, but it allows us to break this up into three projects over potentially a somewhat extended period of time. So what, what Brian provided to us was an estimate that there would be a near-term project that would be in the range of 23.4 million dollars, and that's construction costs. We would have to add costs of issuing the bonds to that. And then the rest of the work could be put off into future phases with Phase 2 not being needed until the system had grown by 2,250 new REUs being added to the system beyond the system's current capacity. So 2, so Phase 2 doesn't have to happen until there are the growth of 2,250 REUs. And to give you some context, the system currently total is, has capacity of 6,700 REUs. So it'd have to grow by about a third before Phase 2 would be needed. Phase 2 would be 22.7 million dollars for construction cost, and I believe that that does not account for inflation, so.
That's great.
That's just in today's dollars. And then the, the total new REUs would have to go to 4,000 dollars, or to 4,000 new REUs. So that would be, you know, another 1,0750 new REUs beyond Phase 2 before Phase 3 would be needed. So to, to put that in a little bit of, of, of time context, obviously, we don't know how fast REUs are going to be added to the, to the city. Nobody knows what growth would be or else we could be much more effective in our ability to do things. But let's just assume that there would be 200 new REUs a year, which would be relatively significant growth for the city. That would mean that in rough terms, it could be 11 years before Phase 2 would be needed. And then it could be another nine years after that before Phase 3 would be needed. So we'd be, we could be, we could be pushing those phases off fairly significantly and thus spreading out and not bunching up the debt service as, as, as much as we'd have to if we did one big project upfront. Some benefits of doing that, and I'll, I'll just give an overview and then turn it over to Warren to kind of run through the numbers to see how you get there. The benefits of doing that is, as we all saw from the sighting study, there's some pretty big dollar figures attached to what the, what the quarterly impact would be to rates if we did all this in one big project upfront. So what we've done is mapped out what bond issues would look like for that, for that phased approach compared against the, the big bond approach, and then looked at what that does to REUs with just respect to the capital cost. I think Brian's REUs were, were more of a holistic taking in operation cost and so too. We're focused just on financing costs. And, and the numbers that you're given in, in the reports that Warren prepared for you are annual REU costs as opposed to the quarterly costs that, that, that Brian prepared. So for instance, I won't get into this too deep, but let Warren do this, but on Option 1A, in, in the early years, you're around $200 per REU per year to cover that financing cost. So that would really be $50 a quarter as opposed to the 283 that Brian had. But Brian's 283 also includes some operation costs. So we're not doing totally apples to, to apples here. So the benefits of, of the phasing are because you're doing this in smaller chunks at a time, there's, there is a significant reduction in the amount of costs that's spread in the first 10 years. And then as those 10 years proceed, you're going to add new customers to the system. And so then when the next phases come, it's, you've got a broader customer base over which to spread that next bond issue, which then further dilutes that cost over a larger user base. And, and the beauty of the phasing approach is if the growth doesn't come, we don't do Phase 2 yet. So if there's slow growth, we just push Phase 2 further down the road and, 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 and then, you know, we'll spread it over that larger user base if it someday forms. If it never forms, we don't, we don't have to get there. So you've got that, you've got that, you've got those dual benefits. The, the stretching this out longer so we're not bunching up all that debt service upfront and then letting new people come in and share that burden really only once the need for that starts to arise at points down the road. So that also then, on the flip side, reduces the risk of, of, of no growth. Because not only with one big bond issue upfront, do you have the larger debt service all upfront, being paid upfront. If the growth doesn't develop, you're still paying that debt service on that smaller user base and, and, and the current customer base carries the risk that that growth doesn't develop. So those are a couple of pretty big benefits to the phased approach. And, and when we get to Warren's numbers, his numbers that show the, the REU impact will assume that the growth is happening when we're looking at, at Option 3C. So know that there's some risk in those numbers. If that growth doesn't develop, you don't get some of the savings over time as, as new users are added to the system. Now, I, last thing I want to say is that while there are some real benefits to that phased approach in that regard, there are also some risks. And, and, and so the risks come from the fact that today we do have historically low interest rates. And so, you know, if we do do this phased approach, you know, today you would get very good rates on the very large bond issue. If we do the phased approach in 10 years from now, or 11, or 12, or 15, we get to Phase 2, we don't know what the interest rates are going to be. This analysis assumes they're going to be the same as they are today because we just don't know what they would be. But there is the risk that that, those, and those options would be more expensive because rates are higher at the time. And then there's the, the risk of inflation and, and construction costs. So, you know, Phase 2 would be 22.7 million dollars in today's dollars. We don't know whether that goes up or down. You know, experience tells us mostly goes up by the time we would get to that phase. So there are those inherent risks that you would take, which would need to be weighed off against the, the financial benefits of, of, of the phasing. And so with that, I'm going to stop talking and I'm going to turn it over to Warren and let him get into the details of the spreadsheets he's prepared for you.
Good evening, Warren. Thank you for being with us via, I guess it's technically Skype, is it not? Yeah?
I, I guess technically, Mayor, but I want to apologize. We're in technical disadvantage over here in Traverse City in that we're working off of mobile hotspots and we have yet to have fiber optics delivered to our house, which was one of the reasons, you know, for my delay in getting the information to you and not being able to be with you this evening. And for that, I, I greatly, greatly apologize, but I appreciate the extra time to go through what is admittedly rather ambitious, you know, capital plans, you know, for the city's sewer system. I was very impressed with what Tetra Tech's done. It was very helpful, you know, along the way, and we had not totally need to discuss this, you know, at length, you know, hence for the purposes of discussion tonight, we wanted to limit our review to really Alternative 1 and Alternative 3C and really just focus on, you know, the difference, you know, that phasing has to the end user of the system. The first thing, recognizing again how large, you know, this, this capital program is, was really whether or not, you know, the city could finance it. So it, it took, you know, quite a bit of time, but we ran the city and the proposed capital improvements through Standard and Poor's credit criteria. And right now, and it's not a bad thing, but, you know, the city has a relatively small system. And the amount of debt, you know, given the size of the system, you know, is admittedly large in any one, you know, of the, the nine scenarios. So what we did is we first took a look at what the rating of the city would likely be, and it's important to point out that the city, you know, has participated in the states involving loan fund and has been assigned, you know, a low investment grade. And there are some new warranties there as to why it would be low, but we actually expect the actual rating, a low investment grade would be in the triple B category, medium investment grade would be in the A category, and high investment grade would be in the double A category. You know, in, in, when it comes to sewage disposal systems, you know, size really does matter because of the natural efficiencies with larger, you know, operations. So we just took a look at, you know, the city right now, and, you know, conservatively, we expect the city would be rated in the A to the A-plus range. The credit model that they have is a move they, and it provides what is an indicative rating for the system, but it's important to remember that when the credit is ultimately taken to committee, committee has the ability to exercise discretion for a variety of reasons to notch the rating up one notch or notch it down one notch. So the indicative rating, you know, was, you know, roughly an A-plus, between an A and an A-plus. You know, the, the rating committee could notch it up to an A-plus or they could notch it down, you know, to, you know, the A. So that's why I'm kind of providing you, you know, basically a window of where the rating, you know, may fall. But, you know, and, and the fact is, is that S and P acknowledges, you know, a, a, a smaller system with an A rating is really a very strong system. And, you know, the city has had years of, of, of strong, consistent performance, which I think bodes very, very well, you know, for any major capital improvement undertaking. But when we looked, you know, at the, the two financings, you know, clearly, and let's just start off with Alternative 3C, you know, again, it is admittedly a large financing and as Roger pointed out, you know, this is something that you would have to finance upfront, you know, and, you know, you know, spread over the current, you know, user base of 6,700 REUs. And, you know, you really lose the benefit, you know, of sharing the cost with people that will enjoy the benefit of the system, you know, down the road. But if you're looking at just simply cost, as Roger pointed out, rates are at historic lows. And this is would be, I mean, I, you know, we're looking at financing, you know, the Option, you know, 3C at a cost of approximately 2.9%. Depending on what you include in that cost, the overall cost could be approximately 2.95%. But just think about it. I mean, you know, that, that is incredibly low and inexpensive, you know, for the city to undertake a major capital improvement program. You know, and if you financed it in phases at the smaller amount with what we believe would be a better, stronger rating, you know, the difference would be 20 to 25 basis points. You know, that's $2,500 per million dollars.
Warren, if I can.
Outstanding times the average, what?
If I can just inter, if I can interrupt you for just a minute, there were some quizzical looks when you said 25 basis points. So could you just explain what a basis point is?
A, a 25 basis point is one quarter of 1%. So instead of, you know, 2.95%, you know, with the upfront C3 financing, we'd be looking at 2.7% for the first phase of the 1A. So instead of, you know, 2.95%, you know, with the upfront C3 financing, we'd be looking at 2.7% for the first phase of the 1A financing. But I, 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 I figured a little bit ahead of myself and I want to apologize. I'd like to get back to the rating process, you know, just for a moment. You know, as I indicated, you know, the system on its own right now would rate, you know, would likely be rated based on, you know, our analysis. Would have an indicative rating of A to A plus. And if you looked at alternative C3 and the magnitude of C3, when you went through the model, the likely rating outcome would be a triple B to a triple B plus. I, I, I had to memo, you know, set that the likely rating, you know, would be triple B. So the interest rate, since the rating is lower, would be a little bit higher, you know, with alternative C3 as opposed to the first phase of alternative, you know, 1A. Either way, they are both incredibly low rates. I don't want to tell you guys when I started in this business, but I remember when long-term rates fell below 5%. And, um, and we just thought that was unbelievable and would never happen again in our lifetime. And here we are looking at either one of these financings at 2.7 to 2.95%. Either way, you know, if you're looking at a timing standpoint with, with the finance, you know, any capital improvement, you have picked the right time. And you have the ability to finance it, either one of these. We just think given the magnitude of the debt, your rating would be higher with the phasing, with the phase financing associated with 1A. And we think the rating would be slightly lower with a higher interest rate associated with alternative, you know, 3C. But in the big picture, you know, the cost is basically a, a deal, no matter how you look at it. The, I think the mitigating factor and where the real decision lies, you know, is the burden that this financing places on the city's existing, you know, customer base. Right now, the city has essentially 3,100 and some odd accounts representing approximately 6,700, you know, REUs. And I understand the need to move forward as you approach 85% of design capacity. But these are assets, you know, that are going to be long-lived assets that will benefit not only the customer base now, but the customer base, you know, that will likely grow in a thriving and attractive community such as Saline. Yeah, so I have to tell you, when I was asked to, you know, work with Roger on this analysis, you know, I was a little conflicted. To me, the decision was slammed up. You know, you go for the low, lower overall total cost. You know, you, you pick, you know, the ability to phase in, protect your downside risk, not move forward with the second or third phase until you meet your REU growth. But then I look at where the real interest rates are right now, and I've never seen credit spreads so narrow before in my life. You know, typically, an investor would expect much more than 20 to 25 basis points between an A-rated credit and a triple B rated credit. So I'm thinking, my gosh, the reason that, you know, the lower credit would sell so well in today's market is simply because investors are starved for yield. So at this point, you have the ability to finance it, you know, with little difference in rate, you know, based on the underlying credit rating. I mean, the difference is, in the big picture, very, very small. And the nice thing about getting it done now is that you simply don't have to worry about market risk or inflation with respect to capital, the capital cost. But then I took a look at the impact of, you know, the incremental debt service on the, you know, customers, you know, of the system. Now, you know, Tetra Tech was kind enough to kind of point out where the triggers would be for the next phase. And, and, and those triggers, and, and looking at those triggers, we kind of arbitrarily, you know, chose 200 a year. Additional customers, 200, you know, residential equivalents, you know, through the system, you know, each year. So that's kind of how we ended up comparing option 1A to option 3C. 3C, and, and I, there's one thing I, I do want to point out, is that, you know, by comparison, the city, you know, admittedly, and I, and maybe Brian could, you know, put, you know, some, a better color on this. But, you know, the city's current monthly or quarterly rates, depending on how you want to look at them, are comparatively high to other communities. I worked with another community. I was able to obtain, you know, a, a kind of a, a rate overview, which compared that setting to other surrounding communities. And, and, and it's really only, you know, a benchmark, but right now, you know, the city of Saline has really comparatively high rates to other, you know, wastewater utilities throughout the state. And then when you add in admittedly aggressive and large capital program, you know, the, the impact, you know, is, is hugely significant. We were looking, a, a, as Roger pointed out, and we got this information thanks to Brian, the city, you know, has, you know, $120 per REU per quarter. So, you know, on average, I mean, the annual cost, you know, is, is, you know, is $480. The incremental cost associated with option 3C for the first year, again, no phasing, but for the first year, the incremental cost would be another $852 or $853 per year. You know, and, and, and that would put you, you know, annual rates, you know, at, you know, some of the highest, you know, in, 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 in the state. And, you know, it's a big burden, you know, for, you know, the current customer base to withstand. Now, over time, we assumed that we would add, you know, 200, you know, REUs a year. And if we did add 200 REUs a year over the next 25 years, that incremental cost would start out at about $852 or $853 per REU. And then it would drop down to about 534 REUs per customer. And this, this would be over time. And I believe Todd handed out, in addition to the memo, he handed out, you know, three copies of Excel sheet tabs. And, you know, the first tab was option 3C, which shows the annual debt service, you know, of the financing. And I want to point out that the, the capital cost that Tetra Tech estimated was $94,841, $841,600. The difference between that 94,841 and $100,565 is the required debt service reserve. You have to remember that this is a consumption-based system. And market convention requires basically a reserve that, that is fully funded prior to the issuance of the bonds or with the issuance of the bonds. So that if there's any adverse change in consumption, you will have the money necessary to pay debt service on the bonds. So when you, when you're trying to reconcile Brian's numbers with my numbers, just know that the difference is the required debt service reserve. So if we start, you know, with, you know, a 94.8 million dollar financing, you know, and add the debt service reserve, we end up $100 to $100 and a half million. You know, that's a big undertaking. And we finished it over, you know, a 25-year period because the market, you know, for 30-year paper tends to thin out. And, you know, the, the relative benefit by going longer is diminished by the relatively higher rates. Just so for the purpose, you know, of, of this discussion, we use 25 years. But if you're looking at that first option C1, and up in the top left, it says $100,565,000 R value, one phase being issued in 2020. We calculate what the incremental cost is per REU based on the numbers of REUs. And as you can see, you know, the first year, you know, it is, is basically 200% you know, of, or, you know, two times, you know, the existing terms. You know, and so, you know, it's a significant addition. And, you know, and as Roger pointed out, could be color productive in the whole underlying assumption of REU additions. But over time, you know, that impact goes down as you add, you know, additional, as you add additional customers. But again, if that growth, you know, doesn't take place as anticipated, that burden falls on your existing customer base. So when we look at option 1A, and Tetra Tech provided us with, you know, the segmentation opportunities and the necessary triggers to move on to the next phase. You know, we saw that, you know, a, a, as, as very attractive. You know, the first phase, again, was estimated, you know, at 23.4 million, you know, with the debt service reserve. We're looking at a bond issue of about $24.78 million. We would issue these in 25-year, you know, increments. And, you know, the, the first year with no additional growth in REUs, you know, the annual impact would only be about 50% of current rates. Again, current rates are at about $480 per year. You know, the incremental debt services associated with phase one would be $205. And I, I, I-
Did we lose you?
Come back, Warren. We were not done yet.
Yeah, you should probably tell him to stop talking.
That's funny.
Hi, you can reach Warren Kramer, I'm just writing on you.
Somebody can text him?
Let's see. So the big thing is that we could do this in phases and be like a Lego build where-
Try calling one more time.
We can have a smaller piece and a smaller debt. However, we run the risk of long-term, higher interest rates over the really long term because interest rates are, you know, crazy wonderful right now. Yeah, in 12 years.
Hi, you can reach Warren Kramer, I'm just writing on you.
It goes right to voicemail.
Does he have to hang up?
Yeah, I texted.
But what an amazing thing.
Okay, everybody, am I back?
You're back. Warren, you, you cut off right as you were beginning to discuss or get into depth on option 1A.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you, Mayor. When, when we were, we just finished talking about option 3C and the impact per REU and the potential impact if we don't realize the growth, you know, that, you know, we're assuming. On option, you know, 1A, if you turn to that page of the Excel spreadsheet, we're assuming that we finance the $23.4 million of improvements identified by Tetra Tech. And we finance it with a bond size of $24.78 million to fund not only the cost identified by Tetra Tech, but also the requisite debt service reserve. I was starting to point out before I got cut off, and again, I apologize for that. But if you look at that second page of the spreadsheet called option 1A, the phasing, you can see, is dramatically less per REU. We're looking at only $205 in addition to the current cost of $480 a year. So we're looking at something less, you know, than a 50% rate increase, you know, as opposed to, you know, 440 to, well, basically two times, you know, the existing rates. So we, again, as Roger pointed out, that if we don't realize that growth in REUs, we could, we could postpone the second, third phases and not place that burden that option 3C would place on the existing but non-growing, you know, customer base. So the relative impact is, is dramatically less, you know, when you phase it. You know, we know that ultimately, you know, we incur market risk and construction cost, you know, risk or inflationary risk associated with construction cost. But again, the man, the burden is managed, you know, with respect to the, you know, existing customer base. And this is clearly why all of you make the big bucks and, you know, are making this decision. Because this is really a decision, you know, that I can't make. I started at the onset by saying I'm conflicted. You know, this is a historically low interest rate environment. The relative cost of the big picture of things is very, very, very small. But on the other hand, and you eliminate the market risk, the interest rate risk and the construction risk, but you place a, you know, a significant burden on, you know, the existing customer base. And I think it comes down to where you really believe, you know, future growth, you know, is going to be. And, and if you, and if you're confident, you know, with that growth, you know, I, I, I still think, I mean, if you're really, really confident in that growth and you would expect it to be a sub-rate higher than 200 REUs per year, you know, then I'd kind of say, hey, you know, eliminate all your risks and, and, and go with option, you know, 3- hey, you know, eliminate all your risks and go with option, you know, 3C.
If I could just interject, Warren.
Any reservation with the anticipated growth and the potential burden that the absence of that growth could place on your existing customer base, you know, I would go with option 1A.
And I just...
You guys speak loud because he can only hear you through that, Roger.
I'm sorry, Mayor?
No, Roger wanted to make a statement.
Yeah, I was just going to interject, Warren, that, to some extent, it's a little bit of a circular problem because you've got the risk under option 3C that you don't get that growth. But as you have the higher, more expensive sewer rates, that also is a disincentive to growth, and so the rates themselves can slow the path of growth. So that's, that does pose a circular problem for us.
No, and Roger, I agree. So I think if you go to the last tab where we show the difference, we show the impact, you know, of option 1A and all three financings associated with 1A, and we compare it to option, you know, 3C. And you can see the difference in the first twenty-five years is significant, but with the option 1A, you're stretching out your financing period, you know, another twenty years. So what we did is we calculated what the average impact would be. And again, this assumes, you know, no change in rates between phases. But we calculated that the average impact per REU over this forty-five-year period would be two hundred and fifty-eight dollars a year per REU. For option 3C, you know, that average, even taking into consideration the years where there is no corresponding debt service, the average is three hundred and sixty dollars per year over that forty-five-year period. So the effective difference is a hundred and one dollars per year per REU over the forty-five-year period. And that cost per REU added up the debt service on option 3C and compared it to the debt service of option 1A, all three series of option 1A. The debt service difference between the two is about twenty-seven million. And when you apply that, the average difference, you know, to the customer base and the average life of the financing, you know, it equates basically to the nominal difference in interest or in debt service cost between option 1A and option 3C. But I think the most instructive column here is the difference between the two options. And the difference, assuming we realize the growth that we're hoping, the difference is rather significant over the next ten to fifteen years. You know, it narrows and then goes away. So it's just really all about where you're allocating debt service and how it's being charged to your customer base. And I didn't mean to be flippant about saying, you know, that's why you guys make the big bucks.
No, no, no.
But this is a, this is a, this is a not an easy, you know, decision to make, no matter how you, no matter how you look at it. And, you know, I was trying to say, if you're really confident, you know, about, you know, new development and REUs coming to the city, you know, the ability to eliminate, you know, that risk and lock everything in right now with option, you know, 3C, hey, that's very attractive. But again, you have to weigh it against, you know, the burden and the potential risk of not realizing that on the existing customer base and, you know, the potential burden if, you know, rates are not, I mean, growth is not realized as anticipated. Now, I know I've thrown a lot at you, but if you have any questions, you know, please let me know.
Very good. Thank you, Warren. We'll open it up for questions in just a moment. Anyone from staff, does anyone from staff, staff, excuse me, want to add anything at this time? Mr. Rubel, I know that the question was asked of Warren about how Celine's water and sewer rates compare to other municipalities. Did you have anything you'd like to share as it relates to that particular issue?
I certainly do not have a database with me tonight to make that comparison. I could follow up if that was important with some data, but I do not have that tonight. I do, I do serve communities that have both higher and lower rates than yours, and that's about as extensive a discussion as I can give tonight.
Very good. Mayor Pro Tem, Gearbock?
Yeah, I have an assessment of looking at Yucca rates, basing it on my own water usage comparison. It's a two to one. Our rates are half over Yucca.
Very good.
Regardless of... Is that water or is sewer?
That's both.
Both?
Water and sewer.
Okay. I apologize. I look at it a little biopically. I'm looking at just sewer rates.
And I don't think we want to get too bogged down in what they are today. I think the real point is that if you go on the large bond issue, then it is going to push them up to some of the highest rates in the state.
Brian, you're good? Mr. Wiegalski, anything you'd like to add? Roger, anything else at this time?
I think the only thing I wanted to add is just to emphasize that we're only looking at the wastewater treatment siting situation here. I think we also think one of the important reasons to maintain and keep the burden lower in early years is we also have collection system improvements that the city needs to make, and that's not taken into account here. So you should always carry that in the back of your mind as well.
Very good.
And Roger, if I could, I understand, and I'll actually defer to Brian, but I understand that option 1A would be a much more likely recipient of state revolving growth fund dollars, which are currently at two percent.
That's an...
And again, I just heard of Brian about...
Yeah, let him respond, Warren.
That is an interesting question, and it would really require a follow-up with the Eagle folks who administer those funds. They do have a stated policy that they cannot fund a growth project. So that does make a project that has a lot of growth in it a little bit nebulous, whether it would qualify. I did make that statement to Warren and Roger that, given that 1 has a lot of renewal of existing infrastructure, I thought it would be more favorably reviewed by the state than, say, number two or number three that had new infrastructure. And that's, that decision truly is up to the Eagle folks to make.
Sorry.
I think one other aspect that, and maybe it would help to just explain what we're talking about, the state has a program called the State Revolving Fund, which is a subsidized program to provide lower interest cost loans for water and sewer infrastructure. We have assumed bonds sold out in the marketplace for our analysis tonight because there's no assurance that the SRF would be available for this project. If it were, we obviously would go towards that route because it's a more affordable route. I think perhaps, Brian, one advantage of 1A, if we phase it, is that a twenty-seven million dollar project probably would fit within the annual budgets available for SRF.
Yes.
As opposed to a very large project might be just be too large to fit their budgets.
It could. You could get bumped, yes.
Anything else you want to add, Roger? Here's what we're going to do, folks. We're going to rotate around the table, entertain any questions, comments you have. This blue microphone adjacent to Mr. Campbell and Councilmember Seo is primarily for Warren's benefit. That's the device that Warren hears you through, for lack of a better way to articulate it. So when you're given the floor, if you want to introduce yourself, especially for Warren's benefit, and then address whatever questions, concerns you have to Mr. Kramer, Attorney Swetts, Mr. Rubel, or anyone on staff, that would be fine. Just a few brief obligatory comments. I don't have any substantive questions at this time. I did not have an opportunity to thoroughly review the documents in advance of tonight's meeting. However, I'll say a couple of things. I don't believe at this juncture, barring additional information, that option three is either appropriate or attractive, primarily due to the additional cost that would be placed on our utility customers. I mean, the numbers that are shared on this memoranda are, I mean, beyond excessive. I can't even think of what pejorative term I would use to describe them. I think option 1A is a more realistic approach. I want to, this weekend or early next week, I want to again review the Tetra Tech analysis and really zero in on its recommendations because a goal of mine, I'll be very candid, the goal is to control our water and sewer rates and make it affordable, not just for residents, but also for businesses who want to conduct an enterprise in Celine. I'm also very mindful, and I've made many public statements to this effect during my tenure as mayor, we've put a lot of time and effort in recent years into controlling and limiting the city's debt burden. So whatever we can do to limit the amount of debt that we and ultimately our taxpayers have on our shoulders, I think it would be beneficial. That's, and the other thing I would add is while I appreciate the estimate of two hundred additional REUs on an annual basis, I think that's perhaps realistic and likely in the next couple of years, but looking five, 10 years out, I don't know how realistic that is, you know. I hope I'm wrong. I pray that I am, but I think as a nation and as a region, we're probably due for another downturn and therefore the demand on housing and the demand for additional housing, I think, will be reduced from what it is today in the winter of 2020. So sort of rambling, but I expressed what I wanted to express. Let me start with Mr. Seo again. You'll be limited to five minutes. And then at the conclusion of everyone's questions and comments, we will do a second round in the event folks have additional thoughts they'd like to share. Councilmember Seo, again, if you'd please introduce yourself and direct your questions to whomever you think is best able to address them.
Good evening, Warren. My name is Jack Seo. I'm a city councilperson here in Celine and a longtime resident of the city. I guess I share much the same ideas that I heard Mayor Merrill express. I think that a two hundred REU growth per year for the next forty-some years is pretty I don't think it countenances any sort of downturn in the economy, which we've seen happen here and again every once in a while. The idea of biting off that much debt at that much expense at that higher rate, not at that higher rate, at that lower rate, but that increase in the quarterly billing per customer takes my breath away. And I think that there's some difficulty with that. I think by incrementally approaching the expansion of the sewer plant, it allows us to control it better. It allows us to keep check on when we do these various steps in the expansion, and that has a lot of appeal to me, to keep from adding too much debt to the current customer base and maybe driving all the folks out of town. So that's where I stand. I think 1A is more appealing. It keeps us where we are. It doesn't face us with the burden of having to try and explain to some new area or some new group of folks why we're putting a sewer treatment plant in their backyard. It doesn't relieve our current neighbors of having it in their backyard, but at least it's the devil they've already known. So I favor 1A at this point.
Roger, if you'd like to respond?
If I could just add a little bit of color, we picked two hundred just because we wanted to have an aggressively solid figure. If you think it's going to be less than two hundred, that will actually make the option 3C numbers worse because they're going to be carried at the higher rates for a long time. But they'll actually also make the 1A numbers better because the low numbers you see for the first ten or fifteen years through 2031 there will be carried down even farther because we'll be pushing out farther to the point in time when we need phase two. So kind of a double-edged sword there. It really is helpful that 1A is...
Very good. Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Seo, anything you'd like to add? Councilmember Del Oracle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Warren, my name is Jim Del Oracle. I'm a recently elected council member. Although I certainly appreciate your analysis with respect to interest rates being at historic low levels, I think that's great news for venture capitalists and people with billions of dollars to play with. But I don't think in all fairness that we can treat our citizens and taxpayers as venture capitalists. There will be a number of people unable to make their bills and mortgage from month to month if we see these kinds of spikes in the quarterly utility bill. Moreover, there's nothing to account for. None of us have a crystal ball. We can't predict when the next recession might hit. And if we build a water treatment plant with a forty-year projection in mind and we shoulder, place that burden squarely on the citizens, that could create a lot of undue burden for our taxpayers. Secondly, I think there's some additional concerns with moving all of the wastewater treatment to Yucca, some things that I don't necessarily need to get into at this moment unless we start teasing a part of more detailed analysis of procedurally what that means as far as various components and what would still need to be in place at our current water treatment plant for that to work. Also, it's been mentioned that we don't yet have verification from Yucca that there's even the capacity for them to take us on. I don't think, that was an area of gray at the last time we discussed all of this. So I am, at this point, in favor of a phased-in approach. Reasons being chief among them is because as new homes are added to the system, we can better manage the burden that would be reflected in the quarterly bill for the current residents. And that's the goal, to keep this as unnoticed as possible. There's definitely going to be some grief about this. There's definitely going to be some pain felt by the citizens, but I think this approach is the only one that mitigates it as much as possible.
I agree. I just want you to know that, you know, again, our job here was to give you, you know, options and the pluses and minuses of those options. And I think you're simply vocalizing some of the concerns that we even had in our review.
As I understand, and I appreciate that. Mr. Gearbock, questions or comments?
Dean Gearbock, Mayor Pro Tem. From my perspective, I've always looked at the concern of what we were going to do to replace this plant. And knowing now that we can phase it from the components of which you're explaining tonight, takes a significant relief off of what I thought was going to be a significant risk that we would have to put forward and really borrow against everything and everyone in this community to make it happen. I do know that the phase one needs to occur. It needs to replace our plant. My whole approach for the last twenty years has always been to try and set aside appropriate funds for a replacement of this plant, and there's been disagreements and issues with that in terms of how councils have wanted to increase rates, in fact, trying to not put a burden on developers or the current residents. But at some time, we have to pay the piper and we have to fix what we own and what we need to do. I think this approach will help address at least the onset of what we currently have and what we currently need. My one question, and this may not necessarily be fished out yet, when we look at what we're talking about, just the replacement, the first of phase one, does that account for any kind of improvements in terms of expansion or efficiencies through new technology and the fact that we might be able to, you know, maybe even postpone a little bit further in terms of our expansion? And I just, that may be a question that I need to have answered for myself.
Mr. Rubel, if you'd like to respond, and of course, if it requires you to gather some information and get back in touch with us, that would be, I think that would be fine as well.
I appreciate that invitation. Again, Roger, I think opened the meeting with a caveat about this. This was put together in less than an afternoon's time so that there could be some information presented to you, so...
And that's fine. I think I...
I think that would be a great follow-up to do into March and get back to you.
Okay, if you make note of that and gather some of that data from Mr. Gearbock, I think, I think, well, obviously, he would appreciate that, but I think the benefit would, or the information would benefit council as we move forward on this issue.
And knowing that, one of my things, though, is I am kind of favored, and if we're talking about 1B, 1B meaning that we might potentially expand across the road into what is the adient property, I still would like to look at that from a perspective of potentially addressing it might be more beneficial... it might be more beneficial for us as we try to convert what we currently have, that having that newer property and being able to move the services might be more beneficial and actually have its own cost service savings instead of having to try and work around every single function and keep a plant moving and going at this point.
I agree.
Then the other thing I had, and could you answer me in terms of our debt limit, our ceiling, and how this would impact it? You know, looking at the document that was handed out to us by Mr. Campbell, you know, you look at based upon our debt margin and whatever it is based upon our revenues and so forth, we know that we have approximately a $55 million debt limit, which is 10%. We currently have about 16 million, so we'd had at this point in time about $39 million more that we could legally issue. How does this, that limit play in with what we would do in terms of this? And my question being is that if we do do the expansion that we're talking about and had to go along the same route and we do have all of this expansion, everything happens on place, at 2040, we basically exceed our debt service?
Yeah, so.
Roger, do you want to address this?
Yeah, I can address this. So, that consideration plays very large in the way that Warren and I have looked at this. The debt limits that you have, that you're referencing, and this is a little bit overly simplistic, but very roughly speaking, that limits the amount of debt that is backed by the general fund and taxing power of the city. So, because we just can't do projects of this magnitude with that limited tax, general obligation type debt, that's why we're looking at doing these bonds as what are called revenue bonds. Revenue bonds only pledge the revenues of the sewer system, they don't pledge the general fund or taxing power of the city, and because of that, they are exempt from your debt limits. But because they only pledge those revenues, that's why we look at some of these additional things that we have to add to this bond issue, like the bond debt service reserve, because the bondholders aren't going to be looking to the ability of the city to levy taxes to pay this bond, they want to know that you're setting your rates in a way that they can be assured that they're going to get paid back, and then the reserve fund is a little bit of a rainy day fund in case there's a dip in usage so that there's not a default on the bonds. So, a little bit of a long winded response, but we're using revenue bonds here specifically because the city debt limits would not allow using the general obligation type bonds.
And I think from that other perspective of the Yucca, we all thought that was a great idea and it would be, having somebody else treating, we wouldn't have that responsibility, but the cost for us in terms of putting it in place at this point in time for the revenue base that we have and the number of users, I just see it as not being a viable solution for us, and I prefer the 1A, 1B process. Thank you.
And if I may, just for the public's benefit, to piggyback on something that Councilmember Gearbo said, in addition to the cost being a prohibitive factor, it requires partnership with Pittsfield Township, and as my colleagues know, based on a recent meeting I had with Supervisor Graywall, that is not something that Pittsfield Township is interested in partnering in 2020 or any time in the near future. So again, for a variety of reasons, it is no longer a viable option moving forward.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbo. Anything further?
No.
No, okay. Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. I've got a few questions, thank you. It's a lot to digest, we just got this here at the dais, so I'm a little confused, and I'll start off with the first thing, is we keep referring to 3C, but isn't 3 in our packet Yucca?
Yeah.
So, I'm like, I'm afraid that, I mean, I was kind of confused when I read that and making sure that we're not confusing the general public. So, why are we calling this 3? Am I missing something? Was?
We, what we did when we built these debt service scenarios is we used the total dollar number need of $94 million that was assigned to the alternative 3C in this table that was at the end of your citing report. We just chose that one as one illustrative example, so the column, the alternative 3C required $94 million to construct, and so we started there. Now, that said, because all of the Option 2 options for a new plant at a different site and all of the Yucca options all have costs in relatively the same range, the cost concerns presented tonight apply to all of the Option 2 and all of the Option 3 options that are listed on this spreadsheet.
You picked a dollar amount that seemed to hit all.
Yeah, it's just very confusing, I'm sorry, in that regard, so.
I apologize, we thought we would make things simple by not throwing, you know, 10 scenarios at you.
No, I, that's fine, I just, I appreciate it, just, I feel like I'm just sort of a page behind on that. So now, as far as my questions, so I guess the first point I just want to make is that everything here that we're talking about, this growth, whether it's 200 or whatever number we pick, is completely contingent on the annexation of a significant amount of property. I mean, this is not infill, this is growth outside of our city, and that's a whole other issue that we haven't even begun to address yet. So, the fact, I'm kind of a little concerned that we're looking at future growth when we don't even know that that's actually an option on the table yet to have that annexation, so I'm a little concerned about that. So I wanted to say that. So the other thing I wanted to ask about is by doing phasing, by the time we reach the second phase, the third phase, whatever, your first phase is now aging infrastructure. So are we factoring in the cost of that? Like, what is the lifespan of that equipment? Because it's going to be 15 years old when you start the next phase, so are we going to be replacing the first part when we're building the second part? And are we factoring those cost dollars in?
I think the answer, I hope I'm not overcomplicating it, is in this report, this did normalize all of those sorts of things, looking at a 20-year period and assigning a value of all the infrastructure at the end of that 20-year period. I do not believe the illustrations tonight necessarily do that, but again, they were more broad in nature for decision making.
Right, right, and are we roughly looking at 40-year lived assets for?
It varies within a treatment plant. Hard concrete architectural features are 40, 50 years and above, they will last that long. Most of the components also have moving parts, pumps, mechanical elements, and just like an automobile, they do not last 40 or 50 years, they last, a general rule of thumb is about 20 years for moving parts. So, it's going to be a mixture.
Right, okay, but so we're not looking at those dollars then as part of this number?
Yeah, we don't have those numbers, so no, they're not included here. I think, you know, we're roughly spreading this debt service on an alternate 1A over a little, over 40 years, so we're definitely at a point in time where even the longer lived assets are going to be wearing out by the time we get to the end of this, at least the first phase, longer lived assets. But absolutely, there's repair and replacement costs that will come into play throughout this cycle.
Right. I mean, at our current plant, do we have pieces that are 40 years old that are still in existence there?
Oh, yes.
Right, and so I guess what I'm trying to ask is, you know, how many times have they been repaired, rebuilt, you know, to the point of full on replacement? I, and I don't want to get into a discussion about that, it's just one of the overall concerns that I have.
Councilwoman Dillon, you want to do one more question, and then we'll transition to Councilwoman Mitchell, and I'll get you in a second round.
So I guess on Option A, I'm, when we get into, what is it, year 11, we have a significant jump again because we're starting, you know, the Phase 2 aspect of that, and we're not really focusing on how, you know, we're looking at that first number, we keep saying 205, 205, 205, yeah, 10 years into it, it starts jumping, and it's going to keep jumping for a long period of time. So, I am a little concerned because if we don't, if we do do a second phase and don't have the numbers that we need for it.
If I could just.
No, please, go ahead.
One of the things that's nice about Alternative 1 is its dynamic. If you don't have the numbers that you need for Phase 2, you're not going to do Phase 2. And if you don't do Phase 2 11 years from now, that jump you see in 2032 isn't going to happen at that point in time because that'll all just get pushed down farther. And the reason you have the jump is because you've got overlap in years where you've got multiple bond issues out there, you've got Phase 1 and Phase 2 bond debt service at the same time. If Phase 2 gets pushed farther back, that problem will go away. So slower growth will actually help in that regard, not that it's necessarily a good thing overall, but.
But it's not actually going to go away, it's just going to push it out further.
Right.
Because you're always going to have overlapping debt.
No, because at 25 years, Bond 1 falls off.
There's a five-year, there's a five-year period where we would have triple debt, if we were to go to full expansion.
Right.
There'd be a five-year period in which you'd have all the three years, three debt services you're paying for, but after the end of that five years, the first one drops off, you continue the two, and then after another few years, it drops off.
But there's still, there's going to be years in which you always have two. You're going to significantly, I mean, other than the first chunk. Right. Okay, I'll stop there, but I would like to come back, thank you.
Yep, we'll do a second round. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. The first thing that I need is a list of assumptions because there are assumptions that I'm hearing about that I need clearly spelled out. I think there are some on page two, there's a list at the bottom, but it sounds as though that is incomplete. I had the same question about efficiencies and technology that Mayor Pro Tem Gearba had, and I, when I stepped back, and there was a comment thrown out about, you know, well, I had an afternoon to look at this, and that's not what I need to hear right My expectation is that when we're talking about significant capital improvement projects is that we're not in a hurry, that we know we have our numbers, everything's really clear. So my concern is that it feels a little seat of the pants right now, and that's not my comfort zone. As far as specific questions, the information that would help me is a comparison of the phase system using just an average growth assumption. You said 200 houses or units a year, you know, obviously we, that's assertive, and if we're being conservative, we want to think and push the numbers, but it would help me to have, you know, what's 150, what's 100? So that comparison would help me, I'm assuming that's pretty easy with your Excel. I didn't hear assumptions about cost savings of better technology and efficiency, so one of the questions for me is that energy usage, and it's also an issue that we're talking about operations in some numbers, and we're not talking about operations in others. We just, we have to have comparative information in order to make good decisions. So, I don't know what you guys want to go with, operating costs or not operating costs, but just be consistent, that's what we need. I think there is going to be some significant energy savings with new equipment, I think it's a very, we have to look at, as Ms. Dillon said, we need to look at depreciation. We just need a fuller picture. What I'm seeing, I really appreciate that we're thinking about residents, it's very important to me, especially in the last month, we've been talking about what does our community need culturally, and we're talking about more diversity, and having sky high rates for residents is not how we get to be more diverse. So I really appreciate that we have some options that are going to be accessible to a wider section of the population. Are we kicking the can down the road? There are so many things that make taking on the whole project unattractive, and it might even be unachievable because of the reserve we have. Are we kicking the can down the road? I'm still going to be hopefully here in 2040, I don't want like neighbors to leave special packages on my lawn, like, why didn't you do? So, I guess that's one of my questions, and you say, well, okay, we would save significantly on the interest rates, what does that look like? It would be interesting to me to have numbers of what that looks like, so, you know, what's the average interest rate over the past 20 years? Right now, it is ridiculously low, but we can't assume it's always going to be that way, so I guess those are the things I'm mostly concerned about. The assumption about the revenue bonds, like, that was new for me, the revenue bond debts are exempt from our debt limits, and I guess my thought towards debt is just because we can, doesn't mean we should. So I just, I'm very, very cautious about debt in general, so I can leave it there for now.
Perfect timing, that's five minutes.
Yeah.
Roger, do you want to, or Brian, or anyone from staff, want to respond to any of Councilwoman Mitchell's comments before we transition to Mr. Camaro-Sulak?
I think we can, I think we can get some of the things that Councilwoman has requested. We can provide a list of assumptions, we can run this with a different growth factor, you really need to tell us what growth factor you want to use because there's not a, there's not a.
I would do, so you did 200, I would do 100, and I would do 50.
I'd like to know what our average is.
We'd have to get that from the city, we don't have that.
But I'd like to have that in addition to 50, 100, 150, because I think 200 is extremely optimistic even, even in the next few years, because.
I'm hesitant to throw scads of scenarios out there because at some point it's just going to become a swirl of confusion, so maybe, Todd, could you get us an average of what growth has been added to the system over the last 10 years, and then we can maybe run one scenario with that, and then we'll pick 100 or 150 depending on how.
I would just caution that, you know, growth is dependent on a robust economy, so what you see is when the economy is good, you see growth. When the economy is anemic and weak, you see no growth.
Right. Well, and that's why it's so hard to pick this number, so if the city would let us know what numbers they want us to use for annual growth assumption, we can run those scenarios.
And I guess, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying I need an exact, I'm going to hold you accountable, we're talking in general terms, I just need something more than 200 units. And I, you know, if you present us with two or three scenarios, that's not confusing, that's just, you know, these are different things, we're forecasting, and we owe it to the people to forecast accurately.
I think two or three scenarios are fine, it was kind of tending towards more like four or five, and I think once we get more than three, it's going to get confusing. We're happy to do it at whatever numbers you would like us to have to do, but I think we need you to let us know what numbers.
We can get you some numbers, but my, I stand behind my initial recommendation, which is probably to do 100 and also a 50.
Okay.
And we're happy to do that, but I think our goal this evening was really to point out the significance between financing all at once and phasing.
Sure.
And what I'm hearing is that everybody's concerned about growth assumption, which in the big picture basically leads you all into the phase financing, which, you know, absent growth provides more protection to the existing users of the system.
Thank you, Warren. Mr. Camaro-Sulak?
All right, thank you. I appreciate all the work that you put in assembling this. I did wish we had more time and to piggyback a little bit, I was looking for assumptions and that would help, and I apologize that we didn't have the average, you know, what our current average has been for our rates, because I think that would have been very, very helpful. It would give us some perspective, because I do agree with the phasing, I think that's going to be tremendously helpful, but that average RUU increase makes. But that average RE increase makes a huge difference in an assumption on how much growth the city is having. So I think we would need, obviously, more time and an expanded analysis with the assumptions. I'd like to look at what our, I mean, this is a little shaded towards best-case scenario. I'd like to look at what our not-so-good scenarios are, if our interest rates are higher, and just look at, you know, the current phase, because we can't forecast out 45 years. But if it's a percent higher, that's going to make a huge difference. So I would like to see that comparison if the interest rate is higher. And if there's any, I don't want to say unforeseen increase in costs, you know, going back to labor costs and material costs that are currently going up at higher rates than what we're used to, that could be, that could be a trend, and we could see that being even more. So I don't know if there's a contingency. Are there contingencies built into, built into these, into these options in this model?
Yes. The capital costs have contingencies built into them.
Okay. And what percentage is that contingency?
Again, I can look that up. I do not have that memorized, but...
Why don't you look that up, Brian and Mr. Camaro Sulek, and continue with his question?
That'd be fine.
All right. Because I think that'd be another area to look at if we have a higher contingency, especially if, you know, we don't really know what the efficiency and the energy usage is going to be. And like Ms. Dillon was saying, the depreciation and maintenance costs of the first phase as we get, as we get further along. But I'm definitely in favor of the, of the phasing. And a lot of the information that you provided, after a little bit more time to digest, I think I would have some more questions and look forward to getting that. And with that, I'll yield the rest of my time.
Very good.
Brian, I can answer that contingency. Based on this, it's 30% contingency and a 10% inflation.
What page are you on, Mr. Girba?
It's on every one of the detailed construction costs associated with each one of the individual plans.
You're in the packet?
I'm in the packet. So if you look at any one of the four, five, six scenarios we have, it indicates at the bottom a 30% contingency and a 10% inflation.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Girba. Thank you, Mr. Camaro Sulek. Let's start for, let's do another round of questions in the event that some folks have them. Mr. Seo, anything you'd like to add at this time?
Just one other caveat that I want to throw on the pile, and that is this, that we've recently been informed of a change in the engineering staff. And if we assume one tremendously large project all at one time, I think that's going to put a strain on us. Hopefully, we can proceed in acquiring new staff to replace those who have informed us they may leave in a timely manner. But we've seen that, you know, in the past, we've had some difficulty trying to acquire professional staff, and I'd hate to see that that would also create difficulty for us in assuming one very large project all at one time. That's my only other thought.
Thank you, Mr. Seo. Mr. Del Orco, anything you'd like to add?
Yes. I was not expecting today's meeting to be primarily about how to finance. That was a surprise to me. So I found myself wading through all the specifics of how to finance, given options, and I now feel like it's no longer appropriate to get into the nuts and bolts of what a phased approach would look like. We have in our packets a proposal for taking this on all at once. And the only information that we're provided with now for moving forward with 1A is a stripped-down Phase One, where we're just dealing with upgrading some of the processes that are absolutely essential and the sustainability of the current water treatment plant. When I think back to where I was with all of this at the first meeting, I was actually leaning towards other options because there is a biosolids handling issue if we continue with our current water treatment plant technology, with a digester that leaves us with a sludge storage system that is being disseminated over people's farmlands. And I think at some point, that's going to become illegal. And we have to figure out different ways of looking at, what other options do we have on the current site to make it more consistent with big-picture thinking, looking out 20, 30 years from now? Is it possible to have an incinerator on-site and still have that be affordable? Can we do away with RBCs altogether and make use of that space there? Also, I noted through talking with some other folks that at one point in time, the capacity of our storage, or the capacity of our water treatment plant was significantly higher than it is today, on the order of 2.53 million gallons per day as opposed to 1.8. And I believe the chief reason for that is because we had a fairly large equalization basin that enabled us to combat this heavy rainfalls and stormwater. And I, my question is, is a lot of the options that were provided moving forward with other options included equalization basins? And is it possible to restore the equalization basin that was once present on our current water treatment plant as a model moving forward?
Yeah. Keep in mind, you're, the previous storage facility at the wastewater plant was open to the atmosphere. It was just a dug-out hole, and I don't believe that would at all be tolerable.
No, I understand. That's why you got rid of it. But the, there's, there's a newer version of this thing out there that exists that doesn't have that problem.
I, I design storage facilities for many wastewater treatment plant projects. So you could put a storage tank in at any, at any time you wished. And as, you're correct that the alternatives did include that.
Right. So in thinking about just doing the capital improvement stripped-down version of this, with just the things you mentioned at the 23.4 million, we're going to increase the capacity pretty significantly just in doing that.
Yes.
And that buys us those 11 years we need before we need to worry about approaching 85% again. Okay.
Yes.
Excellent point, Mr. Del Orco. Thank you. Mayor Protem Girba, any additional thoughts or questions?
Just a couple of thoughts. When we look at, and you look at the analysis on the very last page in the document, there is an annual operating cost, and where it has in it included underneath "other" of $332,000 a year. I believe that would be some of the maintenance costs that we already currently budget in terms of repairing and replacing items that, you know, wear out during our plant. We don't all of a sudden have money that we have to come up with every single year. We planned ahead to do some of that. I also know that we've used some of other reserves that we've collected as a result of the rates in which we've created that potential to use, and that we don't necessarily borrow money every time we do something, because I know we use significant portions of the dollars and reserves we had to not only repair some of the pollution control aspects, but also some of the other improvements and things that we did over the last few years. So the question would be really, I think, when we look at this, again, it gets back to my, what are we truly building as a rate? Are we actually covering our costs and making it a consistent increase every year so that we're not getting behind the eight ball? We're right there with it. And I think that has been one of the biggest challenges. And when we talk about affordability and everything, I know we look at thinking water rates are extremely expensive and so forth, but it's water. It's the one thing that we need to have to survive. It is the one thing that we can provide as a good service, better than anyone else, if we do it correctly and appropriately. So where I look at this as being an investment, and the other part of it is that we have to clean our water. So the combination of this in terms of when we're looking at what we're treating and everything, some of these current issues that we have about spreading, you know, sewer, sewage and whatever left over onto farm fields is a major issue with the entire state. So the EPA, the state are going to have to come up with solutions for us to decide it. At this point in time, we know there's going to be a problem, but to invest in a significant change at this point, not knowing if that's going to be the solution, may not be the best way to handle it at this point. And I agree, I think there are other alternatives that we need to look at, but for us right now, really is the idea of we have to have a functioning sewer system that can handle what we do now currently and available for the next 30 to 40 years, even if we have no growth at all. And so I look at what we're doing so far. For me, it's helpful just to understand that we could phase this, because I was freaking out from the perspective of $100 million bond issue. There's no way we, as a city, could afford it. It could not happen. So I greatly appreciate, and for me, maybe being more in the numbers and so forth, I think your example was very much helpful from just the perspective of that if we don't have growth, we can postpone what we want to do, but we at least can do what we need to do now for what we need to do. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Girba. Councilwoman Dillon?
So thank you. Just kind of coming back to a couple of points that I picked up on the memo. It says in here that we'll reach 85% of design capacity by the time we add another 800 REUs. Doesn't Eagle require us when we hit 85 to start planning? We don't actually have to implement at that point, correct?
No, and my understanding is essentially this would suffice, would it not?
Yeah, I think the answer is correct. You have to plan at that point. You don't have to implement.
We have to plan it, so we don't have to do it. Because I guess what I'm concerned about is further in this memo, and I'm hoping it's just for point of reference. It does say we've assumed bonds would be issued on April 1st of 2020.
That was just a pick, a random date.
That's just a random date.
Well, I know, and then we're using '21. I guess I, I'm just a little concerned of how aggressive are we planning to move on this at this point? Do we really need this to be a fast-paced project?
We're not suggesting any timeframe from what we're presenting. We're only showing you what it would cost if it were done in the near future.
Right. So I guess I just want to make sure that this isn't going to impact, you know, it's, we don't have to make a decision today. This isn't something, I just want to be kind of clear in that. I also, like Mr. Del Orco, kind of wanted to go back to originally, to the binder, and I guess I still wonder about Yucca. I sort of look at Yucca the way you look at renting versus owning a home. You know, yeah, you're paying a little bit higher of a rent, but somebody else is maintaining for you. And I, I'm just not ready to let go of that option yet. I haven't really seen something that tells me. Yeah, we do lose a little bit of control, but we also lose a lot of risk.
And I'd like to address that if you, if you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely. Please do.
I didn't get into that tonight because it kind of seemed like because of the Pittsfield decision, Yucca was fading away a little bit. But one of the, one of the things I want, I want you to be keenly aware of about Yucca from the, from the, from the big spreadsheet in the back of the packet here, is it is adding to your operation cost the current share of Yucca debt service that the city would have to pick up. You're not avoiding any risk by going to Yucca, because when Yucca does a new bond issue to repair their facilities, you're going to pick up your percentage share of that cost. You're spreading it out over more people, but it also might be a higher cost. So, so those costs will get passed on to you, and there's no way for us at this point to predict what they're going to be. You know, if you were serious about Yucca, I would want to see, I would want to see what their asset management plan looks like, so you can see what kind of capital improvements they have scheduled for the, for the upcoming years, because as they do those, those projects, that cost is going to be spread in part to the city.
Well, I do think that part of our due diligence should be to look at that. And as far as Pittsfield saying they don't want to be a party to that, I'm not really sure how that conversation happened, if that was a water cooler discussion, or if there was a formal request, a formal denial. I'm not really sure. I haven't seen something come through about that, because I'd like to know why they don't want to partner with us. So like I said, I do still have concerns and questions about the Yucca prospect. And like I said, I just feel like we're still in a fact-finding mode right now, so I really want to make sure that we are looking at all of those things. My last question for this is that we're talking about residential units here. Where does industrial factor into this? And how does that impact these numbers and all of this?
In commercial and industrial, users would, would, would in general pay a multiple of a residential unit depending on how much they use. So there's no, I can't tell you that XYZ business would be here or there without seeing particular flows for them, but there will be multiples of what an REU would be. And REU stands for residential equivalent unit. So an REU is helpful because it kind of shows you what an average residential user's going to pay. So that's a nice measurement to use, because most of the users are residential, but commercials will pay a multiple of that depending on their usage.
Okay.
And as Brian knows it by May, usage varies greatly in both the commercial and industrial sector. We have one business that's represented in this evening, American Soy, who is a significant huge user of water and sewer services. So we'll have, you know, depending on the type of enterprise, it will have a significant profound impact on their bottom line.
Okay.
Appendix A is a good example of that, so you can see a comparison of what the commercial versus industrial. So the idea is that I am an industrial, and I use 14 REUs compared to a single residential home that may use one REU, that would be the cost to that potential user.
Where are you?
Appendix A.
Appendix, sorry. Oh, there we go.
Where it says growth and calculations. It just kind of gives you an idea of what the different mix-up of what we still have potentially that could be our growth, but it gives you an idea of what their usage is assigned, whether residential versus commercial or so forth.
So I just want to end. I've got one last question. We've seemed to sort of be moving in the direction of building in place. And I believe there's been chatter about not wanting to maintain that property, that it's got a lot of old infrastructure that was abandoned in place. There is a lot of unknowns to that property. And so I want to make sure that we're looking at all of these factors again. Once again, I'm going to go back to, I think that there's a lot more fact-finding that we need to discuss before we decide on which avenue we are going to pursue and the timeframe for it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mitchell, anything else?
So we, we received this memo tonight, and it has some information for residents. Is this information being released to residents then?
It will be available to them.
It'll be available to them, what, like, via minutes or what? If somebody wanted to look at the memo that we have, how would they get that information?
Their best, best bet would be to contact the clerk's office or my office.
So one of the things I would like to encourage is, as we strive for transparency, as we strive for public engagement, I think having individuals contact City Hall is not as efficient as it could be. So I'm wondering if there needs to be some section on our documents on demand that has significant records of, you know, all of these numbers that we're looking at? And then if residents have a question...
Yeah, okay. Please, continue.
If residents have a question, there is some documents that they can look at for themselves.
So I could refer to the clerk. The documents are generally, are included on documents on demand. If folks have difficulty navigating the system or have a specific request for a particular memo or analysis, I would still encourage them to contact the clerk's office or my office.
And I, so I greatly appreciate that the agenda packet, but did the agenda packet contain this memo with the specific information on it?
Well, as of, I mean, well, as of tomorrow.
Because it will have the minutes. So then, I guess the question is, is our expectation for residents to have to do, perform searches every time? And I can ask you this outside a public meeting, but my concern is, I want the public to easily be able to access, to go to one place and say, oh, here's the wastewater treatment plant site study from, what was it, 2032? Earlier. And then, you know, they have, they can get this memo. And I also think we will need to have better access. It's just more efficient, so...
We need to have better access for what?
Two documents. And, and I think one place that is, here are all the wastewater treatment... And I think one place that is, here are all the wastewater treatment citing documents that are pertinent, that have been disseminated, this is where you go to find that. I think that's better than a citizen having to do a search and saying, oh, they discussed it at a work meeting back in January. Oh, now it's going to be discussed in March. Right? So, again, I can talk to you about it later, but I think, from what I'm understanding, there are multiple levels that we are going to have to consider. It's not a decision, I think, that we can make and, you know, oh, three weeks, four weeks. And especially because the phase option isn't treated the same way as these options are, there's nothing wrong with slowing down and getting more information. It doesn't mean we're going to waffle and not make progress. But we need to be very careful because this amount of investment, to me personally, means that we have a responsibility, and we have a responsibility to be as thorough as possible. And I'll point out, so I can give an example, when we were talking about the odor abatement project, one of my questions was, well, you know, we're looking at expanding or getting a new plant, is this equipment, are we putting millions of dollars into equipment that's going to be obsolete in five years, or 10 years, or whatever? And the answer was, no, we can expand on the site. So it was never mentioned to me that we would be looking at different options like this. And I can't predict I would have changed my mind, but that information matters to me. And having been through that experience, I think I have a better idea of what I need to look at for now, but I just feel cautious, so.
Mr. Kamara, Sulek, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, most of my thunder was already taken. A lot of good questions. So just a couple of quick things. Is it possible to get our, what our average commercial REU increase has been for the last, I don't know, five years or something, so we have that as well? And then, I'm going to say the word solar. In the future, as solar panels and solar systems, the technology improves, would it be possible to hook that into our facility? You know, I mean, I'm talking hypothetically a few years down the road. I mean, it's far different than residential use, but with all the mechanicals that we have there, there might be some cost savings if we were to look at this maybe even three or five years down the road, because it just keeps improving, and obviously, we're seeing more and more solar arrays and homes that have solar, and I know the payoff for a home in Michigan is not financially feasible, but is that something that you've looked at?
Solar, any kind of renewable energy could be looked at at a treatment facility. For instance, I worked on a project in Toledo. If you ever drive by the Toledo Water Treatment Plant, not the wastewater plant, there's a big solar array out there. So, yes, that can happen. I'd like to expand on the technology discussion just a little bit. There is a time to talk about all that technology. It generally is a couple steps beyond where you are today, just because of the cost, right? To go through and look at dozens of different technology is a study in itself. My suggestion, based on the way other communities make these decisions, is to focus on the site and the general concept first. And then, once you hone in on that, then spend the time and the cost to further develop the technologies.
Right. That's perfectly reasonable. I just want to make sure that that's something that we're not overlooking as we do our initial planning here, which it sounds like that we're fine.
The point I was trying to make is I don't think that's an initial planning step. It is more of a detailed planning step.
Right, that we're fine for now. We can look into those details later.
I think you and I are on the same page. Thank you.
Yes, we are. Thank you. All right. Personally, I need more time to look over all of this information and see how it ties into our sighting study and to digest it, so I think this is a good starting point. And I as well take, you know, big investment decisions like this very seriously. So I'm in favor of, you know, looking into this more, not making any, you know, quick decisions, but I like what I'm seeing, so thank you very much.
So here's what I'd like to propose, and if I wasn't clear on this point at the beginning of tonight's meeting, my apologies, but I was under no illusion that we were going to get anywhere close to consensus this evening, but I did receive significant feedback. There's been a number of requests for additional information, which I think between staff and legal counsel and our consultant, they've written down and can follow up on. I do believe that it appears as though we're sort of zeroing in on option one or a hybrid of the particulars within option one or option A. And I think moving forward, we need to have a focused discussion on the size and scope of the project and revisit some of the aspects related to our financing options. So what I would like to propose, because adding this as a discussion item at the end of a regular council meeting will not be sufficient or appropriate, I would like to recommend a future work meeting or special meeting similar to this on one of the following dates, and I had the deputy clerk check the master calendar. And so, Mr. Ruble, Mr. Swets, and maybe even Mr. Kramer, I'd like you to check your availability to see if you'd be able to participate via conference call, Skype, or ideally be here in person. And of course, I would ask my colleagues to do the same. Be looking at a date in March. The first would be Thursday, the 12th. There is nothing on the city calendar that would prevent us from meeting. The other date would be the 18th, which is a Wednesday, be the third Wednesday of the month, similar to this meeting. That would conflict potentially with the Environmental Commission and Arts and Culture, which begins at 5:30, although Arts and Culture would likely be done by 6:30, 7:00. Let's start with our guests.
The 12th would be difficult for me. The 18th would work.
Okay.
I would prefer the 18th as well. It gives me more time to, and more time for council to analyze the results.
And of course, I'm mindful that there might be questions that come out of tonight's discussion after folks have an opportunity to review and be thoughtful about some of the documents that were shared that, you know, they may direct to the city manager. So there, long story short, there might be some additional questions and requests for analysis and information. Okay? So the 18th is good for you. Mr. Campo, that would work for you?
Yes, sir.
Okay? Let me start with Mr. Seo.
I'm open.
On the 18th, okay?
Sure.
Mr. Delarco?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gierba?
Yes.
Ms. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Kamara Sulek?
Seven o'clock on the 18th works for me.
Okay. Do people mind pushing it back to seven?
Fine.
Okay? All right, we'll plan on seven o'clock then on the 18th.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, my pleasure. And obviously, that'll be, we'll put out a public notice, and so our residents or any interested parties are welcome and encouraged to participate. Quickly, please.
I found the financial input of Mr. Kramer interesting, and I also think it's too high level. It needs to be much more accessible, I think, to make sure I'm understanding it correct, because my background isn't finance. And also, for people who are following along, it was extraordinarily difficult to follow because the conversation was at such a high level. So I would encourage some polishing of that type of presentation.
I appreciate that. I did not find it too high level, so the recommendation after this meeting is if you could email the city manager and I and give us some recommendations on how that could be made more accessible, that would be helpful. Any additional thoughts? Okay, then we'll transition to the second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? Please.
Eric Grossman, again. I'm one of the few that find this kind of stuff interesting because of my infrastructure background at the city. One of the things, you know, you're talking about making big capacity advancements with the plant, and so I was wondering why we are using the same amount, we have the same outflowing in the plant now as we had in 1983. And so, I took the map and I made red marks on all the additions to the city since 1983, and the city's almost doubled in size, yet the treatment plant, the inflow in the treatment plant's the same. Now, part of that, I think, is all the areas in red would have low-flow fixtures when those houses were built. Their storm and sanitaries are separate. These storms in all these new areas are impervious to groundwater. A lot of the old sections of town, since 1983, when we did water mains, we did upgrades on the sewer. So the old sections, the water infiltration was severely reduced. So I look at this whole project, not just as a treatment plant, but your outside infrastructure as well. Your issues with the East Belt Sewer wouldn't be an issue if you could control the water infiltration. You wouldn't have the spikes. The whole thing is integral in working together, and so if you can keep on working on your infrastructure improvements, you're going to bring your capacity levels at your treatment plant up. This is the last, 1987, where the city did an actual upgrade, and there's a lot of interesting information in this little flyer. I made some and gave them to Mr. Delarco, what I give to you. And really, how does a plant get like this is, it's situations like the NOVA filters. As long as people try, you know, try and push this kind of thing on the plant, it's decaying because you can't have brand-new things like this that have four pages of problems and you just kind of keep it going, you know? This kind of stuff is why your plant is malfunctioning, is you've got to stop having equipment like this and not do anything about it. You need to correct things like this. You can't go to the public and ask for $20 million when you've spent god knows how much on the NOVA filters and they're not working, so it's a package deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grossman. Any additional citizen comments?
My name is Jim Roth, and I live very close to the sewage plant. I thought this was going to be a discussion on the site report, and I heard more tonight about financing it. Can someone summarize, has a site, have you have a consensus on what site you chose? Because you're talking about one, two, three, and all kinds of subtitles. You're not clear to the public what you really have chose. You've been spending lots of time talking about finance, which is great. I agree with you, and I appreciate all your thoughts and efforts into it, but would someone please clarify where you are on the site? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. I'll be happy to address it at the conclusion of the public comment period. Appreciate the remarks. Any additional comments? Please.
Mary Hess, and I was wondering, as far as the public being aware of what's going on, I think, do we have the book on the desk, at the front desk, for people to be able to see? Good. I think that was offered to me a couple of weeks ago by the mayor.
I think it has been since it was issued, so probably several weeks now.
Or bring it up to date, and to notify maybe on Facebook that it is there to see. The other thing is, as far as, the mobile home park was brought in while I was on council, and I remember that we were asked to annex the mobile home park, and that it didn't become monetarily frugal for them. But I think it's very important that the city is aware that they have their own sewer plant and their own water plant. And when it goes kaput, we have already been told 20-some years ago that the city's going to be taking it on. They may give us, you know, a little bit of money as far as the government, but we are taking it on. So that is something that is in the future. The other thing is, we have homes that are out of the city limits, but they get city water and sewer, and I understand they pay double water and sewer charge. Many of the homes that are in the township are rented out, and they get reasonable rent. The only thing, it hits them in the head when they get their three-months water bill, and it's $1,800. Has the council ever looked into the Boundary Commission as far as bringing those homes inside the city? Because they do get street cleaning, they do get the street lights, and I'm sure, as it is, the Boundary Commission doesn't like islands. So that's, you know. And another thing is, the city did float about $3.2 million in bonds last year, hoping that we would, you know, see some improvement. I think Mr. Grossman has definitely, as far as, agreed with my concern on these NOVA things, too, that they were good salesmanship. Thank you very, oh, sludge cost. Have, when's the last time that the city looked at the sludge from taking in septic tanks? Because we were told years and years and years ago by a former that taking the sludge is like 200% stronger than our affluent from our own.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess.
I would like to finish.
Are there any additional public comments? Well, appreciate everyone for attending this evening. Let me just start by responding to some of Mr. Grossman's comments. I don't think there's any doubt about it. We've been greatly disappointed by the quality of the NOVA filters. However, I believe it was in late 2019, city council did approve a consent agreement with NOVA, which I believe is very advantageous to the city, and if any resident or interested party would like to review that document, I'd be happy to provide either a paper copy or an electronic copy. As it relates to Mr. Roth's concerns, just so that we're very clear, the Tetra Tech analysis outlines essentially three options. One, expanding capacity and equipment at our existing site or on to some of the adjacent parcels, building a new plant, or connecting to Yucca. We do not have consensus at this time as to which option we will pursue, but I think it's pretty clear from tonight's discussion that we seem to be zeroing in on option one, option A, which would be to expand capacity and add new equipment at our existing site. But hopefully, we will know more after our, at the conclusion of our next meeting, which is on March the 18th. And again, any interested party is welcome and encouraged to attend that meeting, which is open to the public. It'll be hosted here on the 18th at 7:00 p.m. If there are no additional comments, I would note our upcoming meetings, and the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:40 p.m. Moved by Dillon, and was that a second by Mitchell?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
But would say nay. Eyes have it, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.